Weather or weather, especially today as we bring a little bit of over, do you have a potential for some secure weather? And if you're not registered for alert Fairfield, go out today and get registered. Fairfield D D is made by Dr. Brown.
All right, we're going to recognize March 22nd as International World Water Day. Say that fast.
We recognize that in water, once a year, March 22nd. In Ohio, we have a lot of water. So this is an recognizing address.
For water.
Yeah.
Okay, I heard water. I didn't see it, so it's still not outside.
It talks more easily than they did.
One, two.
All right, and Dr. Brown will be joining us as we recognize March 1st through March 7th as weights and measures fee.
March 1st through March 7th, 2024. And the last one, most we've realized.
Behave.
Is sure that that very scale is very.
The family fathers envision weights measures as a local task and function, and we're very happy to be able to fulfill that. Most recently, the dollar generating and family dollars, suddenly resulted in food entry. donations right here in Fairfield County that was based on data that's been gathered by weights and measures. And the next public service announcement you're going to see from weights and measures would be how to protect yourself from scammers at gas pumps.
Maybe just one more. One, two, three.
All right, then lastly, you have a proclamation recognizing March 10th through March 16th as Sunshine Week. So you all are sharing this all on behalf of all of the Fairsville County Government.
Obviously, I begin to recognize today, so they may have a week of seasons. That's not a month.
And that's all of them.
We have black person.
We can fly.
So we have with us today, Dr. David Oo. He wants to. So a little bit about what's going on, Davis.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to be here once again, as has already been noted, and thank you for the proclamation. And for all of your support, not only for the commissioners, Ani and Jeff, and really the entirety of Fairfield County. At some point, we touched just about every single department and partner with that department somehow. And so we're very grateful for all of the support and for the proclamation recommend recognizing March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. I know it's busy, and so I'm going to try to blaze through this just as quickly as possible. Some of it would be review, but for some who may not have been here in the past or may not know, Fairfield D D exists to bring about a vibrant community where people lead lives of greater independence, make meaningful contributions. That's our mission. Our vision is to recognize and build a community that recognizes the value of each and every person. And so every day, we're working hard to fulfill this vision and this mission based on our values. And special thanks to Dr. Brown, we went through a process over the last year or so of really trying to solidify what is our vision? What's our mission, our core purpose for being here, and what are some of our values? And these are what we live out every single day. Everything that we do with the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities is born out of the mission, which talks about environmental community, greater independence, and meaningful contributions. And it talks about, in our vision, recognizing every single person, every person in Fairfield County, recognizing them for who they are and for the abilities and talents that they have, and so the potential that they have. And so this is what we're doing each and every day, and it's such an honor to be here and be able to serve. Currently, Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities serves 1,731 people in Fairfield County, plus their families. And so when you think about that, we really are relatively well split across adults and children. So we serve just about half that number who are adults, 22 or older, and half that number are children age zero to 21. And I'll just mention that we are seeing significant growth, not only in Hickington, in the northwest corner of our county, but also we are seeing significant growth in the area of early intervention. We had someone last year for this presentation who talked about early intervention and how significantly it is growing. That continues. We had 50 kids aged zero to three in the pipeline of interested in services and being seen for introduction and eligibility over the holidays this last December. And so we're close to 300 zero to three-year-olds that we are supporting right here in Fairfield County. We do not expect that this is going to decrease in number. And so we are working to ensure that we have the resources available to be able to meet the needs of those youngest kids. Because when we're able to address those developmental delays in a meaningful way, and our process and methodology has been shown to do just that. When we can do that, if we can reduce or even eliminate those developmental delays, there may be the possibility that that child wouldn't need us in the future. And that would be a fantastic thing for them and their families. I wanted to put up here the revenue and expense for the county board. Last year, our revenue was $24 million. Our expenses were $19,800, almost $20 million. Our revenue is derived from a couple of things. First and foremost, about 80% is derived from property tax levy. And you can see we're in the midst of a 10-year levy that does expire next year. And so we are working currently to put our process and strategy together. We will be coming before the Budget Commission and the commissioners to be on the ballot likely in spring of next year. Now, we're coordinating with other organizations who are also on the ballot. There hasn't always been such great coordination before, and then you get a number of things on the ballot all at once, and it's somewhat challenging because everyone's competing for those dollars. And so we don't know that anyone else will be on next spring, and we are working to try to get on the ballot with the commissioner's permission as we go forward, because the levy will end and stop collecting at the end of next year. We have 158 team members at Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities. And last year, 2023, our turnover rate was 7.6%. In our sector and industry, it's between 20 and 30% across Ohio and the country. And so we were very grateful that we have an unbelievable number of loyal employees who are with us, who buy in and believe in the mission and the vision and the values that Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disability has embraced. What we do at Fairfield D D can sometimes be confusing, and it's evolved and changed over the last decade. We used to, at a relatively high level, provide services to people with developmental disabilities. We do not really do that anymore. County boards across Ohio, for varying reasons, have gotten out of the business of actually being the service provider. Now, we do a little bit. Early intervention is an example of service provision. Forest Road School is an example of that. We do a little bit of behavior support and assistive technology work as well. But in great measure, we're not the ones providing the support. Per Ohio Vice Code, we are to coordinate the service that someone receives and then fund it. So we have become, over the last several years, not unlike Adam H., where they're not the ones providing the service, but they're working to connect people in the community and then fund that service for those people. And so that's something I think is a change, something that not everyone in the community realizes as of yet, but it is something that's important to note as we go forward. I wanted to talk a little bit about our strategic areas of emphasis and our initiatives, because they match up in great measure to the county's strategic plan. Your strategic plan initiatives are on the left side, and ours are on the right. And we may say it a little differently or call it something different, but at the end of the day, they're all connected. And the way they're connected, for example, is in the social service area, where you talk a lot about mental health and you talk a lot about youth services. The same is true for us, again, as we continue to grow multi-system youth, how we're supporting kids, how we're supporting kids in various systems. The fact that there's not really good options for kids who have the most intense needs here in Ohio or even across the country, because these places are either completely booked up with huge waiting lists or they do not exist at all. And so our coordination with other social service entities is key and very important, as is the availability. From a housing standpoint, we regularly see surveys for people with disabilities who continue to struggle securing housing for varying reasons. Sometimes it's because of the inaccessible layout of housing. Sometimes it's because they need assistance with the maintenance of housing. And unfortunately, a lot of times, it's because there's not affordable housing available. Again, this is one of your strategic initiatives, and it impacts the people that we support as well, because we're looking all the time, whether it's an apartment, whether it's a house, for affordable housing. That doesn't necessarily mean subsidized housing. In some cases, it does. But just affordable housing in the community, and as you all know, the inventory for that is very low. When it comes to economic development, we are very interested in this as well. As we continue to grow as a county, as workforce comes, we have to be able to support that workforce and their families. So as people are coming to work here in Fairfield County, as businesses are locating here, there may be people who have a child with a disability or an adult child with a disability. There may be people who, while they're here, end up needing our service for some particular reason. And so we are interested and continue to work in the area of economic development as well, because we want to make sure that we have responsible and sustained growth that we'll be able to then come around and provide the supports that are needed as things move forward in a positive direction. Inspired workforce is really, really important to us. Again, 156 employees, and we're working every single day to provide whatever they need to do their job at the highest level possible. And so we have worked really, really hard through learning and training, through providing some incentives, whatever it may be, to encourage people, one, that Fairfield D D is a great place to work, and two, to stay with us as we were to live out our mission and support people every single day. I know workforce is a huge issue for the commissioners, and we're right along with you. In addition to our workforce, of course, we know that there are employment issues with people who have a disability. Only 22.5% of people with a disability across this country are employed. That means 77.5% are not, and those are staggering numbers. For those 22.5% that are, they're likely underemployed. They may be working a part-time job where they have the potential and capacity to work more. And so often, people with disabilities are overlooked as a valuable part of the workforce. And we're here, again, to recognize the potential of every person, to help people live a more independent life. That doesn't mean that anyone becomes completely independent. I'm not completely independent. It takes a whole crew of people to keep me in line every day. I know that's true of you as well, Commissioner Davis. And so we're not independent, but we can measure greater independence as people move forward toward that. And so employment, workforce, is one of those things that's something that we're committed to and working on every single day. Another area I know you're interested in that touches on workforce is transportation. Commissioner Davis, we're so thankful for you and your emphasis on transportation. Transportation remains an issue for people with disabilities. Accessibility remains an issue, and affordable transportation that operates at a time when they need it continues to be an issue for people with disabilities, not just people with disabilities, but certainly those who have a disability experience this as well. And so we're excited today to announce that the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities received some state ARPA funds that they made available to county boards who applied. And we, as we were looking through the strategic projects that we wanted to undertake or support in this coming year, knew that transportation was important. We knew it was important to you. We know that the transition from Lancaster to Fairfield County is a big deal, and I believe that it's going to provide great support across the county, continuing on with what Lancaster Public Transit has done over the years. And so we're glad to be able to announce today that, because we wanted to support that initiative, part of the $890,000 grant that Fairfield County Board of D D got, $100,000 is coming to the commissioners for accessible transportation. So we want to support this effort, and we're doing so today by passing this along to you for accessible transportation purposes. And there's a whole lot of details, and we'll work all that out as we go. But we're hopeful that this will continue the great things that are happening with regard to Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit as we go forward in the future. Very quickly, I just want to say again, thank you. It is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. I think everyone's aware. We have a couple of events. If you want me to make you a terrible cup of coffee, come and visit us on March 6th. We're doing guest barista, which means we're the ones making the coffee. So pretty much, they just let me do the drip coffee, and then if it's a drink that's made with espresso and other accoutrements, someone else is going to handle that. But you come down, hang out. The executive team of Fairfield County Board of D D will be there, interacting with the community, and we'd love to see as many people out as possible, March 6th, between 10:00 and 11:30. We also have coming up, Celebration Possibilities, March 20th. That's less than a month away. It's coming very quickly at the Weng Long. We have two great guests who are joining us, Sam Adams, who's a comedian and motivational speaker, and then a young lady named Amy Brockerset, who has done fabulous and unbelievable things in her life, even given the barriers that she has experienced, even given people told her, you can't do that, you'll never be successful. She has seen unbelievable success, so she'll be here to speak to us as well. And Tuesday night before the celebration, at our Pickering to the Regional Office, we have an event with her and her family where they're speaking to families from Fairfield County Board of D D. So anyone who's invited to that family event, its free Celebration Possibility tickets are on sale right now. Again, I just want to say thank you to each one of you for your fantastic support. You have helped us and supported us in innumerable ways, one of which, and I think we're getting ready to do it here in just a moment, is by appointing fantastic board members to the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities. And we have a strong board of people right now, parents, guardians, and people from the community who are passionate about the work that we are doing, who are committed to moving our mission forward. And five of those appointments belong to you as the commissioners out of the seven. We're very thankful for your great work. So thank you for the opportunity. I know we're moving fast. I was trying to move fast. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions quickly.
Real quick, you mentioned workforce. So obviously, if we didn't have that facility without the cooperation of Developmental Disabilities, we'd all be carved for ourselves. So we very much appreciate that. I believe Commissioner Davis would like to make a comment.
Greatly. I appreciate your traveling today. And through your whole presentation, where you tie your dishes and the things you're working on, there's some of the things that the commissioners are interested in. I just wanted to express my appreciation, of course, specifically for transit. I have a lot to say about that, but I won't do it today.
Thank you, Davis. Thank you.
Yeah. Also, thank you for the support of the transit and recognition of housing as an important issue. I think you maybe undersold your turnover number in that, you know, to me, the measure of leadership is how well your people appreciate you, and they stay and do the work. And the fact that your number's so low, I think is a testimony to you and your team. So nice work on that. A couple of quick questions. You talked about employment numbers nationwide at 20-some percent. Do you know what the number is in Fairfield County?
We don't know what the number is in Fairfield County. It becomes more difficult to drill down on a local context. Typically, it mirrors across. I would expect it is in that low 20s range. But I can try to do some research and see if I can really drill down on it.
Last question. You mentioned the significant increase in the zero-to-three-year-old folks reaching out to you. Do you attribute that to increased population, increased awareness? Why do you think that number's grown so rapidly?
Yeah, it's really all of the above. There's no doubt there's increased awareness, whether it's doctors and hospitals that are referring, whether it's people, anyone can refer. And so whether it's people in the community, other agencies we're partnered with who are understanding it, and just our awareness efforts in the community as the county board, the population growth is certainly, has an impact on that. And then, you know, what we've seen, I think, as the COVID babies have come, is that there's some impact that COVID had as those children were born, even though they were zero, one, two. And so as we're progressing through that continued evolution, I think that's having an impact as well. But again, we're not expecting, because of the previous two things, that it's going to slow down. I think this may end up being one of the biggest areas that we support from an age standpoint at the county board in the coming years.
Thank you for your presentation. I really loved that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for including us in the grant there to get the accessible transportation. We'll work closely together to make sure we can maximize that funding.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Ali, you're up. So this is actually a public hearing, so this is a public hearing.
Hi. And I am just going to briefly go through this PowerPoint presentation. It's very similar to the last one, just in case somebody wasn't here at the last meeting. Do not want to spend a ton of time on it, but we are here today because of a small change in the mapping system from FEMA. And so that has triggered us to be required to update our special purpose blood damage prevention regulations to comply with the most recent model program from ODNR, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. It does require two public hearings, so we were here on February 13th, and we're back here today on the 27th. Nothing has really changed since the 13th. It's just that we're required to have two public hearings. Again, NFIP is a voluntary program that communities participate to help provide reduced blood insurance rates to residents, and that is done by adopting the model regulations from federal government that flow through ODNR. And again, that's why we're here today, is to update those to reflect the changes in the most current model. There is really nothing too significant that is in the updated model. We're keeping everything pretty much the same. This is the, except for we are adding a couple of things. I'll go over here at the end. But this is the process of adopting it. We're about halfway through. Once we adopt the regulations here, then it has to go through a couple of steps through FEMA in order to become effective. The two biggest things that are changing in the regulations is that we have to find the subdivision regulations committee as our appeals board. No sense of reinventing the wheel and having two separate boards, so we're utilizing an existing board. And then we are updating the violations and penalty section. It's actually the same penalty. It's just referencing it as a fourth degree misdemeanor versus just the fine that goes with it. So it would actually have the jail time or the fine with it, I guess, as it reads under this current language. So with that, I'll turn it back to you to open it up for public comment.
Okay, so real quick, you mentioned this is just a minor change in the one floor.
Yes, correct. Yeah, in fact, and that isn't even like part of the public hearing process. That's done with, and that change has prompted us to do these text changes.
So to conform with a public hearing, are there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this? Not, is there someone here that is opposed to this? Anybody would just like to make a comment regarding this? Let's get this here.
Great, and we'll have a resolution to your next meeting with fashion regulations to adults.
Thanks, Ali.
Thanks.
So Kelly Smith, is she here? We've been in the.
Checked a couple minutes ago. Commissioner is not here to be here yet.
So we'll, she shows up. So we'll move on to public comments. And if we would, please, as brief as possible today, because we do have such a very, very, very full schedule. So who would like to be first?
My name is Ray Steeman, 2444 West Point Road, Lancaster. And today, I would like to add to some information I gave a couple of weeks ago about Tom DeWes. Tom DeWes has been working for 30 years to work around agenda 21, now agenda 30, and all the NGOs that are operating against him. And I like to point that an NGO is a non, got it written down so I wouldn't forget it, non-government organization. They're all non-profit. And these organizations, you'd be amazed at how many there are. I had a pen out at home, and Judy and I found this in your computer, about the size of an opening in Ohio map. You open it up, and you find all these NGOs are connected in some way to the top. And a lot of them were put into effect during the time that Obama was in as president. He brought people in, inserted into NGOs to kind of run things. And these NGOs actually have more to say than what the Congress and the Senate have in the last few years. So I'd like to go on from there and say our tax money pays for a lot of that. And these are also worked through grants, and they collect money from George Soros into the UN. So these are all organizations that work against what our government stands for, the Constitution. And I'd like for people to look into this a little closer. And I would like to close with a prayer right now, because this nation is on the threshold of making a lot of important decisions, and we will all be affected by them. So Lord, as we come before you this morning, we thank you and we praise you for this opportunity to come to you, because you have all wisdom and knowledge, and we have very little. So we thank you and praise you that we can come before you and listen for your orders for us and what we need to do. And we pray that we will listen to what we hear, be the truth, coming out of the book we call the Bible. People try to prove it wrong all the time, but the more they go against it, the more it shows that it is true. Your next.
Who will be next?
This is Short. Sherri, I'm with 3464 South. Thank you, Good. There is a meeting tonight from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Looking Heights Middle School on Mink Road, and it's concerning the solar panel plant that's going in. And there are some people there that are going to inform everybody about, you know, what the whole thing is all about, because the Chinese government is involved in the ownership of that. And so we need to become aware of what's happening, not all over the country, but right here in Ohio and very close to us. And so anybody wanting to attend that is welcome.
Good morning. I'm Judy. How many have been aware, there's a congressional hearing yesterday before Congress that was all about COVID. And here are some of the testimonies that were made. Dr. Ryan Cole, an MD, spoke of how, since he has received very important medical truths, as he suffered from things that have come from the government, the pharmaceutical industry, and the mass media. Here are some of his quotes. "Truth matters above all." "The higher educations at institutions are calling him ignorant, and even requiring that all students take the shot at those institutions." "Now he employs only two of the 80 staff that he had previously." "He has had death threats for speaking truth, and when asked if he would do this again, knowing all the turmoils he's gone through, he said he would." And then there's Ed Dowd, author of "Cause Unknown: The Epidemic of Sudden Death in '21 and '22," was also heard. He had published a demographic scorecard which illustrated how there were such excessive deaths. deaths that increased after '21, after the shock had been pushed for two years. He stated that the reserves and the insurance companies are falling greatly. He also stated that the insurance companies did not want to act due to fear from big government, FDA, CDC, CDC, and MSM. And then there was Dr. Flynn, the father of a son who was a victim of COVID shot. He and his wife have been working for several years and have developed a solution, a formula that is able to reverse the effects of COVID. And you can go to warroomwellness.com for more information on that. Everyone needs to look into this counter medication. Also, there were others who spoke about a free press anymore, and the website that gave more freedom to learn more is citizenfreepress.com. There has been an immense manipulation of the information on this subject, which does not result in true freedom in our nation or our county. There is a very huge storm coming, and when it comes, when it arrives, then you will regret not paying closer attention. And that is if you are truly for America and this county. My thank you very much.
Do you have an open seat up here for you? Do you mind if I approach today? So welcome, Kelly. You're seeking an appointment to the Board of Government Disabilities. So would you mind telling us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, so I'm Kelly Smith. I'm a mom of three, I have a six-year-old, a four-year-old, and a one-year-old. My four-year-old has a rare genetic condition, it's like she's missing part of her chromosome, so she has like global delay. So she's been at Forest Rose now, this is her second year, and it's been really wonderful for us, not only for like the community that we've found through Forest Rose, but also just for her like development. So she went through early intervention, and I got to know everybody, and was told, Erica Neal actually told me about like a position on the board, and it was something that sounded like I'd be really interested in, just because I definitely am passionate about finding out, you know, just more resources for her and like kids with special needs as well. So I'm also the family support coordinator for the state of Ohio for the SAPI2 Foundation, which is what her diagnosis is, she has SAPI2 associated syndrome. So I am the Ohio Support Coordinator for that foundation. And then I'm a social worker, and I'll start my Master of Social Work in August, and I work at, I'll be starting the new Starlight Facility for Ohio Guidestone, I'll be working there. Yeah, so.
So you need a little bit more to do.
Yeah.
Can you say you have three children? And you're also starting your master's degree?
Sure am.
Yeah, so really, I have a question, your background obviously lends itself to being able to add to the board. You heard Dr. Wool earlier talk about the strength of the board and how it's, you know, all over town. And so really, my, some questions to say thank you for being willing to serve, and these volunteer board positions are incredibly important. The VD Board is incredibly important, you saw the numbers of dollars that flowed through there, and that board really helps to decide where those dollars go and how families are supported. So your willingness to take some of the limited time that you might have to devote to that is greatly appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful, Davis. I also just wanted to thank you for your willingness to serve. We're on a little bit of a tight schedule today, also out of the thousands of appointments that, and a part of, I got one wrong, so I'm supposed to defer to these guys now. Forward, but I'm sure things will go well.
Thank you.
So thank you, and I'm sure you've met Dr. Wool.
I have, yes, briefly, I think, at one of the Forest Rose celebrations, so, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Amy, Commissioner, this time I do not.
So I believe it's, our boss? So we'll see you there Thursday.
Oh, great, I appreciate it.
Your appointment is on the schedule today. You can stick around if you'd like, but I don't anticipate that it's not. Sorry, I was thinking sometimes.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you. You too.
When you're busy, you can serve the lady. Amy, anything on legal?
Just briefly, I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago, the litigation involving here, reflections was exposed of in the Ohio Supreme Court, we're pretty happy with that. Nothing else, Neil.
Appreciate all the hours spent missing that stupid law.
I appreciate that, and I wholeheartedly concur.
What is that, oh, sorry.
Yeah, every Wednesday, so I guess today.
Today.
Yeah, it's today.
So county administrative update.
All right, and thank you, Amy, we appreciate your work on that. One thing to note here in the week in review, energy efficiency program for Ohio Communities' Grant Projects, those were awarded last week, and Don Coches had been working on that submission, and we were able to receive $250,000 in grant funding to complete LED lighting and direct digital controls and building automation control network upgrades. So the lighting will take place at the Government Services Building, and then the controls and building automation will be at the Workforce Center. This is expected to yield about an 18% utility savings. To note as well, the city of Pickerington, they did receive about $250,000 in grant funding as well to complete a similar project, but theirs is expected to yield about a 20% utility savings. John, would you add anything to that?
Well, I'm just happy to see this project get going. It'll help improve the lighting itself in the building, and obviously its energy efficiency.
And John, it was several months ago when you had first talked to us about this, this project that you were working on, and it's finally come to fruition, so thank you for all your work.
Will that replace all the, like, all the interior lighting?
Cory's very happy about it.
Be able to see what you're doing there.
All right, moving on, highlights of resolutions of review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and today we do have 14 resolutions on the voting agenda. Couple of notes, there is a resolution approving six proclamations, and those you previously provided to those folks, but we will vote on that. And then also a resolution amending the resolution, appointing Ryan Holstein, and that may have been what you were referring to there, Commissioner Fix. This is for the Adam H. Board, and Mr. Holstein was interviewed in November, and then was set to begin his appointment July 1st, but there was a vacancy and a term, and so we are moving up his appointment today, and appreciate his flexibility in that. Also have a resolution regarding a memorandum of understanding between Fairfield County Family and Children First Council and Fairfield County Job and Family Services for financial and managerial oversight. This will just formalize that relationship we have there, and make sure that there is a vehicle for funding, and making sure that there aren't audit issues for JFS. Cory, Heather, Tiffany, Josh, anyone want to add into that?
Thank you, describing. That's great.
And things are going well with that, Tiffany and Josh?
Yeah, she's great.
I just want to be with stuff.
What did you say?
Want to be with stuff.
Stuff, yeah. Thanks everyone for their help on that. And then lastly, a resolution approving a service agreement between the Sheriff's Office and Motorola Solutions. And as a note, it is Jeremiah Up's 50th birthday, so if anyone does see him today, give him a shout out with that. No budget review, we'll do that next week for the sake of time. Bennett, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Okay. Your calendar review and invitations received, the United Way Awards Banquet on February 28th at 8:00 AM at the Olive Dale Senior Citizen Center, the Indigent Defense Study Task Force, February 29th at 10:00 AM at the Ohio State House, the Starlight Center Grand Opening on February 29th at 1:30 PM, the Fair Hope Hospice 40 Year Celebration on March 21st from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM at the Milletman Center. And the Child Abuse Prevention Month Breakfast on Wednesday, 10th, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM at the Life Church Vineyard. A full list of the correspondence received by the Board of Commissioners Office is available on our website and in the agenda for today, and that is it.
Thank you, Bennett, that's all, Commissioner.
Well, it's kind of, I mean, you got a letter, we got a letter last week from a concerned citizen, and I think it was a really good summary of some of the misunderstandings that have been out there about why we're doing what we're doing, how we're doing, and all that. So I wrote a letter back to them explaining, you know, all of that, and answered all their questions, and to me, it's a really good summary of, you know, why we're doing what we're doing and how we're doing it. So I encourage folks to read that. We continue with our meetings with individual townships and villages. We have Millersport and Walnut this afternoon, and a very good meeting with the Township Association and the Mayor's Alliance last Thursday, in which we kind of introduced the revisions to the land use plan, and answered any questions. And the way I perceived it is that the revisions were very well received, and there's a much deeper appreciation for the process that we went through and the plan that we results from that. So I feel like we're making great progress there.
Davis and Neil. Good, thank you. Commissioner Fix, new business. No, thank you. Commissioner Davis? No, thank you. Let's rise if you're able, and join me in public comments.
I'd like to take the spirit of life of the United States of America and into the Republic which sustains one nation, under God, in the discipline with liberty and justice.
Dennis, any announcements?
There is one announcement, Commissioner. There were two duplicate resolutions on the original regular agenda under Job and Family Services. Those two resolutions have been removed, so the agenda in front of you reflects those changes. Thank you.
Three more minutes for February 20, 2024, and also February, the second meeting that day. So moved on both? Second discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Minutes pass 3-0 from the Commissioners, Resolution 2024-02.27.a, a resolution authorizing the approval of proclamations.
Commissioners, I move items A, B, and C. Second discussion. Seeing unrolled call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Resolutions pass 3-0 from the Fairfield County Clerk of Courts Leaking Division, Resolution 2024-02.27.d, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, 2318 Computer Fund.
Submoved. Second discussion. Seeing unrolled call?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0 from the Fairfield County Clerk of Courts Title Division, Resolution 2024-02.27.e, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer in a major object expense category, Fund 2326.
Submoved. Second discussion. Seeing unrolled call?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0 from the Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution 2024-02.27.f, a resolution to request appropriations for receipts for EMA 2890-8324 hazardous materials emergency planning grant.
Submoved. Discussion. Seeing unrolled call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0 from the Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2024-02.27.g, a resolution regarding a memorandum of understanding between the Fairfield County Family and Children First Council and Fairfield County Job and Family Services for financial and managerial oversight.
Fairfield County Job and Family Services, and we move items G, H, and I.
Second discussion.
Just want to quickly thank Josh and Heather and Tiffany for the collaboration and the work they're doing. I know it's been a heavy lift, and you guys have done a great job, and just really wanted to appreciate that. And I know there's others, but you three are really doing it, so thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Resolutions pass 3-0 from the Fairfield County Juvenile Promote Court, Resolution 2024-02.27.j, a resolution authorizing the approval of an amendment number one to the fiscal year 24 grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Youth Services.
Submoved. Second discussion. Please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0 from the Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2024-02.27.k, a resolution to approve a final plat for the development of 9695 Boswell Western Road Final Flat.
Submoved. Second discussion.
Um, this one is for MedVet, so it'll also include right-of-way dedication, that's helpful in the Boswell Road real.
Bennett, I failed to move on item L as well, can you amend my motion to reflect that, questions K and L?
Second. Additional discussion?
The second one is for a DHL site, and it will also include right-of-way dedication for the road real.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Resolutions pass 3-0 from the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2024-02.27.m, a resolution authorizing the approval of an agreement between the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and Motorola Solutions Incorporated.
Submoved. Second discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0 for the Payment Bills, Resolution 2024-02.27.n, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Submoved. Second discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Resolution passes 3-0.
So we have a couple of minutes before Commissioner Davis needs to leave, so real quick, Holly, anything additional with RPC?
Just exciting news that we're going to have our vote on the comprehensive plan at the March 5th meeting, a week from tonight, at 6:00 PM at the Fairfield County Workforce Center, so we're excited about that.
Long time coming. James?
As many people know, the due date for the first half was February 15th, although we continue to receive payments both in the mail and also in person. Thank you.
Lisa?
Dr. Brown?
Peter, today I'm going to be going to a meeting with CAO relating to advocacy for property tax reform, and two of those things probably have interest to the CCAO as well, relating to the owner occupancy credit, and expanding that, as well as the homestead program, expanding that. Those two programs are the ones that we often receive questions about and have desire from the public to have improvements in those two things.
So I attended Elder Abuse Commission, which I'm a pepper, and that was one of the topics of discussion yesterday, so it's a big deal.
I'd also congratulate the team on the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, the Financial Achievement Award that the county received altogether.
Anything additional from the prosecutors office?
The name of preparedness, as John has it for this month, we put a bid out for a generator for one of our wastewater facilities. See those resolutions next week and the following week.
That's, that's important.
We don't be down to one facility that needs a generator, so.
Yes. Kelly? So tell us what the weather's going to be like tonight?
Storms, nine to 10 degrees, open spring.
Dan?
The two resolutions for movement of monies related to Clerk of Courts is just to get some desktop hardware for many of the staff. Needed, but it was a great partnership between new court IT manager Daniel Thompson and our team to kind of prepare for this. It's going well with Daniel Thompson.
Corey, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Very good, so we will, let's see, we'll be in recess, we have an executive session at 11 o'clock, and Commissioner Davis, I think, needs to get on the we're in recess.